Good afternoon and welcome to our public meeting for the adoption of the final budget, September the 14th, 2021. We will start with, I'm going to do the invocation. Commissioner Thatcher, if you would do the honors, sir, followed by Commissioner Bellamy, the Pledge of Allegiance.
You can't use the one you used earlier.
That'll be a different prayer.
No redo.
All right. Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for watching over us. And, Lord, we thank you that you have wonderful plans for each of us, wonderful plans for Manatee County in Florida and for the United States of America. Thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jan Brewer, how are you, ma'am?
I am good, commissioners. How is everyone tonight?
Ready to get this done.
Yes, ma'am. You ready for me to start?
We are ready for you to start.
Okay, so as the first to set the stage of where we're at, we're at the end of the budget process. This is your second public hearing. It officially started about nine months ago, and this is the culmination of it tonight. Now, tonight, the important part is you're going to go and pass the millage, which that will go into the tax bills, and your budget will be adopted and comes into effect on 10-1. Now, remember, the budget is a living document, so every time you meet, there is an opportunity to alter it or change it as you see fit. We do know that there's two items that you're very concerned about, and we recognize that. One is the East County Library. The other was the animal shelter. Our last meeting brought those up. Our recommendation, if we could, is to say that we know the East County Library. You're already getting briefings scheduled on it. That will come back before you. And then also, the animal shelter somewhere in the fall. You're going to be briefed on all of that. But with the two together, we wanted to go ahead and start the final public hearing so that you have. And one of the things Dr. Hopes is very graciously passing out, we wanted to make sure that we point everyone online to our CIP area, and we have your top projects there. There's about top 20 projects that are interested to each of you individually or collectively. And this one is on the Premier Sports Complex. This includes the library in it. So that you can see on the second page, it gives you a total cost of what all those projects are. We thought you'd like to have it. It's online for your viewers. And then that way, as you start to move forward this process, it will have a little bit more clarity for you. So with that, the first item I need to do is read the aggregate millage. The aggregate millage rate for Manatee County Board of County Commissioners for fiscal year 2122 is 6.8322. And the change from the rollback aggregate millage rate of 6.6288 for the operating millage is determined to be a positive 3.07% increase. And there is, again, there is an overall .2 mills decrease in the overall millage from the prior year. So with that, I'd like to go through a quick budget presentations. There's just a couple of slides. There's nothing you have not been privy to before, but as with public hearings, we'd like to make sure everybody understands what you're passing. In this fiscal year, the first column represents the 22 tentative. That's what's been advertised in the paper. And if you go down the first line to the first black cross line, you see the countywide operating millage is 6.3826. Looking in the second column, which is the adopted that we're in from this year that we're in right now, you can see it's a decrease of .05 overall. When I say it's a decrease of .2, when we provided you with the proposed millage, we actually increased it by .150. Now it is decreased down, and we decreased it back. The .1500, we increased it, and we dropped it .05 below. Your unincorporated millage has remained the same at .6109. This is for your unincorporated area, the MSTU. And finally, you have a Palm Air MSTU for the Palm Air area. That has remained the same at .2546. And again, the note at the bottom identifies that the proposed millage set on July 29th has been lowered by .2000. The other item to note on this page is that, as we discussed in the last public hearing, your environmental lands are being funded through the reserves that you have, and this will start being levied in '23. The newspaper provides, this by-trim process is requiring your overall budget sources. This is an example of the item that you have for all the sources in the budget and was advertised appropriately, as well as the uses. Your total budget is $2.1 billion, and the net budget is what I'd like to go over. So the net budget is $923.4 million, and remember, that's removing items that are being counted from going from one pocket to the other, internal service funds, transfers, and also the cash balance. So you can see here, the net budget for FY22 is $923.4 million. You can also see that the largest amount of revenue you collect is through property taxes. 31.5% of all the funding comes through there. The next is your charges for services at 30%. And then we've also got your other items, other taxes, and your intergovernmental funds at the bottom. Total revenue coming in, $923.4. So with that, then the question becomes, where did you spend it? Again, you have highlighted that public safety is your number-one concern. You have placed that at 24.15% of your budget, or $223 million. The fiscal environment is also the utilities. That's why it comes in large at 20.73. That's at $191.4 million. Transportation is the ongoing operations. That's at $64.4 million, or 6.97%. Your human services, and then your culture and recreation roughly make up about 6% of the budget. The biggest increase by far is the capital outlay that you have initiated. You've done almost $350 million investment in your transportation, and you are substantially increasing your infrastructure. So with that, that's a short list of the $923.4 million. And with that, I'll close. That's the summary of the budget.
Thank you, ma'am. I've got a couple of commissioners on the board. Commissioner Whitmore?
Yeah, I just want to, so we have a $2.1 billion budget. The net is $923 million. The 6.3 mills is like the good old days. But I have to pay city taxes because I live in a city, so mine are still going to be higher. Of course, you have to pay the unincorporated for the ones that live in unincorporated. Library, this is new from yesterday, so I just, of course, I support the 18 million, and I know the additional costs were for the chiller and the parking lot. But what I don't see on here is I see the parking lot, but I don't see the chiller. And I know, you know, and I'm glad you broke it down because it had gone to 15, and then all of a sudden, it did go up to 18. So I do support the new library. We had many emails from citizens. And it, how, when's the last time we built a library? Does anybody know? But I mean, they're built the last 20 or 30 years, and this is a fastest-growing area in Manatee County. So, you know, we're in our premier sports complex campus, and this can be a great place. So I support the entire 18 million when you have it broken, but I don't see the chiller.
One of the things that we were, that's why when Charlie Bishop, the deputy county administrator, he's coming around to each of you to go through this, and he's going to reconcile where each of the pieces are in which project. Because this, that's why we've lumped them all together, because all of them are coming around the same time or within short phases. So the road needs to be divided up. The fiber needs to be divided up. All these pieces need to be divided so that one is not carrying the load.
So the library will pay their share.
Correct.
And the sheriff will pay his share, and everybody else in the world, the Parks and Recreation will pay their share. But what you presented us initially, I think that gave others sticker shock is because it was all lumped into one.
Correct. So when Mr. Bishop comes back around to visit, and then he'll go through it with each of you, and then I understand it'll come back collectively, so you'll be able to discuss.
Where's the chiller, though? Because that's important.
It would be inside. It would be inside the library and part of the remote parking. All of those are kind of lumped together.
But there's still no money for it. It was separated before when we talked. The chiller was separate, besides the East County Library, the chiller wasn't in that amount, were they?
The chiller was never a project by itself.
Okay.
Because what he has is just overall plans that he's bringing forward, and he's representing the chiller as part of the library.
Is it in the library?
So it was never divided out. This is what's in the budget right now.
Is it in the library or adjacent to it?
I'm sorry. When I'm saying in the library, I mean, in the project. It's adjacent to it. Sorry.
If I wanted to know. Okay. Thanks. Sorry. That's all.
I'm next on the board. Jan, I really appreciate those charges being taken out of the library, because I knew there was no way the library had gone up to almost 20 million. I knew that couldn't be right. So I really appreciate you guys taking those charges out so that we could really get a better look at what's happening at Premier. I want to send a thank you. I know Charlie's on vacation, Charlie Bishop, but he did call me on Friday and went over all of it with me before he left. So I really appreciated that. So for all the people that were concerned that we weren't going to build the library, I don't think that was ever the case. I think the case was, all of a sudden, it went up $5, $6 million, and nobody really knew why. So that was the major concern there, at least for me. So thank you for doing it this way so that we really have a better understanding of the monies.
And Commissioner, when Charlie does come around, I'll make sure I'm with him for you to understand clearly what's in the budget, what he's proposing, and the crosswalk between the two.
Thank you. Because I know there's a lot of players going on at Premier with all this, so.
And it's not fair for one to bear the burden of the burden.
No, it's not. I mean, the library can't pay for all of it. It's just not possible. So I really do appreciate all that you've done to try and straighten that out. Commissioner Serbia?
Yes, thank you, and great comments. Madam Chairman, I agree. That helps us so much, Jan, to understand how it is all pieced out. Just for the public, I wanted to make it very clear and make sure I understand that the environmental lands levy will begin in fiscal year 2023, which is actually next year.
October 1.
October 1, right?
Of '22.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to be clear on the math, a $7 million library that turns into a 20 is a $13 million increase, not a $5 million increase. We workshopped CIP. I brought up to Chad, and this is, I'm not looking to debate this or anything, I just, I brought it up to Chad, there's a sidewalk on 75th Street that ran from Cortez Road down to 53rd along Whiting's property. It's still in here for like a million something dollars, and I promise you, no one is going to walk on that sidewalk.
For 20 years.
For 20 years, yeah. So we would want to pull that out, if that could be, I don't know if we need to do an amendment to the budget down the road, Dr. Hopes, or how you want to deal with the sidewalk, but I thought it was going to be pulled out.
Yeah, and I drove by that about four times this past weekend, and
So you know no one's walking on that.
Yeah, we'll work on it. We'll do it as an amendment.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Madam Chair.
All right, I am back on the board just to discuss a couple of things I just heard. Mr. County Administrator, can you help me on the conservation monies? I know that, quote-unquote, "the public," property owners will start paying their portion in '23, but this year, it is being funded with our reserves. Is that correct?
Yes, and actually, it's the reserves on top of the reserves. So it's the stabilization funds, which are the amount of funds in excess of fully funding the reserves.
Right.
And as you recall, you, as the board, directed me to come back with that plan for a tax decrease, and we were able to secure the funds to basically fully fund the environmental lands program at the level, about 95% of the level, that would have been generated had we taxed the public with those stabilization funds to further deplete those funds. And so, to put it in perspective, it's really at 100% because we won't have to pay the fee to the tax collector for collecting the tax.
Right.
So the net amount that we're funding, the environmental lands program through the stabilization fees, is equal to the net amount that would have been generated for the tax. So you will not be, you'll have the opportunity to levy that tax next year at this time, which won't go into effect until the fiscal year '23 year.
Right. And the only reason I ask is because we've received a lot of emails from the public, some people that felt like we weren't doing anything on that. And so I just wanted to make sure, again, that we announced that, yes, we are. We're just paying it actually for the public out of our reserves that we already have.
And in fact, I think it's October 27th that you have a work session.
Right, right.
Where we will be presenting to you a proposal, how to utilize those funds.
Right.
And target properties for your consideration to begin the program as the voters voted.
Right.
And as I mentioned before, should we have major purchases that this board wants to pursue, we can still exercise the authority in that resolution and referendum to bond up to the $50 million to fully fund the program without taxing the taxpayers this year.
Did everybody hear that? I think that message has been lost, and it's so important that people understand that. So it's not that we're not doing it. We are. It's just they're not having to pay for it right now. So that's the neat thing and wonderful thing about it. On the library, I just want to bring up to my fellow commissioner, Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge, yes, it did. It started out at 7:00. And unfortunately, I think it was about the same time that you guys were elected and got on the board, it was already passed it. And it did. And hopefully, I think, you know, in the future, we won't see that. But it did. And there we are today. So just wanted to mention that. Commissioner Bellamy?
Yeah, I'm looking at our updates to the infrastructure sales tax and the CIP process, and I see where it says, "Project deletion."
Project.
What page? Where are you?
For IST. So inside your packet, we provide you, on the very last page, there's a set of three pieces of paper, and there's, these items are for the infrastructure sales tax. We have to identify to you what's been added and what's deleted. And Candy, if you want to come up and, because I think he has a question about what's deleted.
Because we moved stuff around.
Adrian.
It's if we change the amount. If we had changed, let me restate. So per the IST resolution you passed, you can either increase or decrease a project through the budget amendment process, which is during your regular meetings, or the second way is during the budget process. And so this is during the budget process, and we're showing items that have been deleted or if they've been changed due to the price that we know of. We've gone, we've made sure to go over everything with you so that you know what they are. Is there one in particular you're concerned?
Yes, East Bradenton Playground Replacement, where it says it's been deleted.
Oh, you weren't here that day.
I have a missed day.
For all we've been through, humor.
I have a missed day. I'm missed.
Candy Cruz, management.
See what happens. The East Bradenton Playground Replacement was deemed not eligible for IST. It's an R and R project. It's still going to be done, but it's going to be done out of operating.
Right.
Yeah.
Is that a question? Or what is it? Or praise the Lord?
No, no. Praise the Lord like this. Praise the Lord, everybody.
That's also how you vote no sometimes.
Yes, that's true.
I got that.
So it's shifting somewhere else, right?
Yes.
But it's going to be addressed.
That's all it is. It was deemed uneligible.
Will the timeline be impacted?
The same. It's just the funding source changed. We have to reflect that.
There you go.
Hallelujah. Thank you. It was a great question. I saw it. I didn't have it. Thank you, ma'am.
Commissioner Whitmore?
Yeah, I'd like to know, Mr. Boat Ramp Guy, if you can, somebody can give us an update Penn Bay Boat Ramp. Looks like $2.8 million. Where is that in our CIP? And is that just a design?
No, that's, we're ultimately fully funding that at $6 million, I believe.
Yes, I believe it is.
Right. And we have meetings coming up with Preston pretty soon, starting the permit process. So that's sort of full speed ahead. And I think we're talking like two years out.
FY '24 through '26.
Don't forget, I'm on the WCIND. If there's anything with the boat ramps, we do that.
We expect you to bring us all the money, of course.
Well, I will if you'll.
This is just to get started.
That's the only way it's going to get done.
Yeah, I will if you'll.
They've been funding 50%, though, in all seriousness of boat ramps.
Yeah, I will if you'll help me with the animal shelter.
Hey.
I hear this.
Yeah, no, no, I'm used to eh, and then eventually I get it.
That's why I did it.
I know. Question about the animal shelter, because I wasn't here, and I watched it when I got home. And Thatcher, thank you. Don't know what happened. Maybe you want me to leave now, and we'll see what happens, but.
Better leave well enough alone.
No, no, because I heard, say, $6 million, and I saw $4 million in this. So what, minus $4 million. Can somebody help me with the numbers?
I can.
$10 million total.
I can.
No, it was 10.
Yes. This is only representative of IST. You had $2 million in contributions.
No, we didn't.
Originally, in the CIP, it was
For $10 million.
$8 million.
And we were going to put 8, right.
And then there was 2. So what this piece of paper is showing you is that $4 million has been reduced to the new animal shelter. So it's 4, and $4 million was moved up to the bishop. So there's 6 in the new animal shelter and 4 in the bishop.
Okay, I don't see it anywhere, but I believe you. I trust you.
I probably, no.
Thank God for Jan. She believes in you.
I don't see it, Jan, but I'm with you.
The overall in the project sheets show it, and they are all posted, and they show the contribution. So that's the difference.
And I will shut my mouth about that issue. I'm going to say a prayer. That's all I'm saying. Goodbye.
Hang on one second, and we can show you, just so that you have it.
It's okay. I believe you.
Okay.
Put wire ahead.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm fine.
It's either now or later.
Number one, rolling sales.
Yep.
Commissioner Serbia?
Yes, one quick question about John Marble Park.
Yes.
Splash pad?
Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am.
I don't see it. Did it disappear?
Oh, no, no, no. It's here. It's here. These are, so let me make sure I'm really, really clear. The infrastructure sales tax are the items that we're identifying specifically in the book so that we're in compliance with the resolution.
Okay.
And then the other piece of paper where it talks about budget changes, those are items that have come to you as budget amendments, or that something has shifted, and we're identifying those for you. John Marble Splash Pad, if you give me just a second, I can tell you where it's at. Candy may find it quicker than I can.
Oh, we're about to pause.
Come here.
Charger.
So, oh, John Marble Splash Pad has $45,000 in it right now, and as of October 1, it adds another $355,000 to it, for a total of $400,000.
On page 12.
Okay, thank you. And just so I'm clear, the IST dollars that are referenced on this sheet here, those dollars are not paying to harden John Marble to a hurricane center.
Correct.
It does say hurricane shelter on here, but that's the state money that we got that's paying for that, right?
And I believe we're going to have to, unless the state comes through, remember, it was a $2 million upgrade, and we got a million. So right now, we're waiting for the state to finish speaking with them. Then we'll have to come up with the other million.
Okay.
It's what we'll have to do.
Request it from
Or do a budget amendment. Okay. Or request it from the legislature. Thank you.
Those dag-on budget amendments. They always do. Commissioner Cruz?
Yeah, this isn't a project-specific. This is a procedural question, either for Jan or for Scott. At some point, we're going to get to a point where we are going to make a motion to adopt Resolution R-21-154, which adopts this capital improvement plan as shown, inclusive of the previous discussions about EMS and animal shelters and pools. We discussed waiting until October to do amendments, but when is the timing, because once we theoretically approve this, this is the new CIP.
Correct.
What's the timing of, actually, having the discussions we started having for almost three hours last week?
Last week. So in my mind, I think the way it'll play out, if it's okay with you, what would happen is that Charlie Bishop and his crew will come by and talk to you about the projects. And we can start with the library. So they'll talk to you about the library. It'll come back in an open meeting. If there has to be any adjustment to a budget, then we do it in an open meeting, and I do the budget amendment. It changes the CIP. You can change the CIP as we go through. So at this point, it will be a vote of the board to change it, and then I can come back with a budget amendment the next meeting, or you can just instruct me. It's better if I come back with a formal budget amendment the next meeting, after you make a decision.
Because this is my first time through this. I just want to make sure, because technically, there are things on here that we discussed, in fact, all three of those items I just mentioned.
Yes.
That are slated for a portion, in some cases, a large portion, in fiscal year 2022, meaning hypothetically, October 1, someone could start drawing money on those things. And I just want to make sure that this isn't implying, go to town and start like shovels in the ground.
And I think, Dr. Hopes, go ahead.
Yeah. So keep in mind, this is the budget. You will have to authorize, anything over $500,000, you have to authorize. Even though it's in the budget, you will, especially on the CIP, on these capital projects, you'll have contracts that come to you, you'll have, you know, pre-construction authorization and things like that. So I assure you, nothing is going to start that you're not aware of and have approved actually expending the funds.
And if I may, you're going through that design process first.
Right.
Then it has to go through procurement.
Okay. But see, there's my problem. All design work doesn't cost over $500,000. And we randomly, in this county, throw 100 grand, 200 grand all over the place, designing roads and parks and everything else that just never get built. And that's just wasteful money if there are things that a majority of a board doesn't want to move forward on, or wants to move forward on a different scope than what's being designed. You know, let's say, for instance, and I support the library, but let's say, for instance, a majority of this board says, let's not build a second story. That's not me. But if they're for people, then I have to respect that.
Right.
What if we spent $100,000 designing a two-story library, and then all of a sudden, we finally get around to vote? There are certain things that we know we want to have discussion on. There are people that are here for the sole purpose of a single item right now to say, well, just sit home, and maybe one day on a consent agenda next March, this is going to pop up. So be ready to race down here. I think we should be having these meaningful conversations on a few of these meaningful, large, $10 million plus.
I guess, in my mind, and I'm sorry if I did not verbalize it enough, in my mind, for example, the library is the first one that's coming up. You'll have meaningful conversations individually to get your thoughts across to Mr. Bishop, and then Mr. Bishop will bring it here for an open discussion, not on consent. It would be an open discussion.
First of all, maybe I didn't, I meant more when the contract stuff. I just meant there are some things that are larger, that are more important. The EMS staff is watching to see what we do at the stations and how we handle that. The people that support the animal shelter are watching to see what we do with that. The, the people that support the animal shelter are watching to see what we do with that. People in East Manatee, holy, so we got hundreds of emails from library people. You know, they're all waiting for these big-ticket things that, that they're very passionate about. So I just want to make sure we're putting some effort into having those meaningful discussions to give direction to, to Manatee County in terms of how this board's thinking, and not like when it's convenient down the road.
Right. I think, you want to answer that, Dr. Hope?
Well, I think a perfect example is, I, I was quite aware of the, the issue of the bishop donation, the animal shelter out east. And if you look at, at the CIP that was approved prior to my arrival, and I think prior to the, the new members taking office, that was approved for design in the 2021 fiscal year, and that design work was never done, because there were a number of, of, of members, and it, in my opinion, there was not a consensus of where it was going to be built, if it was going to be built. And that's, that's one of the, the roles in, in, in constantly having those conversations. So I'm, I'm confident that the staff that we have in place today will, will get this board's approval and consensus however we need to get it before these major projects move forward, even with a design. Now, I will tell you that the library currently is at 100% design. It's, it's completed, they're, they're ready to go. And, and so that will be a very early conversations with regards to moving, moving that project forward, because they've actually been holding back on it subsequent to the, the designs being completed. So I, I think that you will see that we will be having regular meetings, both with the project managers for key projects, especially in those districts where they're represented by a, a district commissioner. And we have such a large capital improvement list that this board will be meeting regularly, both one-on-one and as a board, as a corporate body, to give guidance to administration on, on moving these projects forward.
All right. Edel, thanks.
Commissioner Whitmore.
Okay, you're kind of messing me up a little bit here. So I know where George is coming from, and I think, but I just want to, once this budget gets approved, whatever projects are in the CIP, wherever they are, they'll start moving forward because we'll have the funds, correct? Okay. Anything under 500,000 won't come before us. But there are some sensitive ones here, as we all know, that's who's all sitting here. I don't want us to start and then be where we've been for the last two years. So I at least let the commissioners know if something's moving forward in, in respect, so they all know where we are in all the project. So nothing's, because we got people that are still wanting to give, you know, contributions, and it kind of stopped, and they, they're waiting. And I don't know what, I'm going to say, well, maybe in a couple of months, it may not happen. There's some people with big money out there that are wanting to step up and can't do nothing.
Sure, and I'll let Jan finish, but, but we've got, we, we are preparing a com, a comprehensive dashboard so that you have real-time reporting about where projects are in the process with, with financial indicators and graphs and timelines. So we've, we have spent a tremendous amount of time over the past few months preparing for what we have before us, both so that we can manage the projects, so that we make constant progress towards completing them, but also so that we're transparent, both with you and the public, about where these projects are in your districts and in the county in real time. And, and a lot of preparation that's, has gone into that. And I think you'll be very pleased and impressed with, with how we intend to engage you and inform you throughout these next five years of, of massive project deployment in Manatee County.
Because this has been going on for a long time, and it's just like, you know, and I got so many, we got so many people that have so much money.
Well, Madam Chair, I think the best indicator is, is those of you who represent single districts, you, you are seeing, you are seeing what we've accomplished in the past few months about getting things started. That really had been stagnating. I mean, there, there's no doubt.
Big time.
I mean, when I, when, when I worked with the Financial Management Department on, on the analytics, to see where projects were that you had already approved, you had already funded, and, and where they were stuck. And, and we've, you know, I've pushed hard. The administration has, has risen to the challenge, and, and you are seeing things move in, in the county, I think at a rate that maybe you hadn't seen in, in quite some time. And, and it's going to be, it's going to be a, a faster, and it's going to be Mr. Toad's wild ride, because we're going to get a lot of things done.
Okay.
I'm back on the board, and I, I think I just heard somebody mention the library. I was just going to say that it's, it's really right at 100% designed, because it's been going on again forever. But I've had a lot of conversation, and some of the questions that I've had on the design is, you know, do we need to do this now? Can we do this later? And this is something the board will look at and make decisions on in moving forward. Because, I mean, I've, I've had questions on it too. But the bottom line is, the library is being built, and it's not going to be slowed down. I mean, we're moving forward, so. I don't have anybody else on the board. Any other questions, commissioners?
Public comment.
All right, we'll go to public comment. I have a few people on here. The first one, Sue Colsey. I wonder what in the world she could want to talk about.
I really spread out, sorry.
Can't imagine.
15 years now. Oh, there you go.
Filtered manatee.
You are new, aren't you?
Those are the people that are raising money.
I was dealing with school issues.
That's right.
Thank you.
State your name, you'll have three minutes.
I'm Sue Colsey from Bradenton. I'm one of the co-founders of Animal Network back in '99. We're the people that wanted dog parks in this county. That's where we started out, and we grew from there. I am. Better? I'm usually loud, anyway. I'm one of the old people from the animal world, so I'm just here to, to clear up one item that I think might be a little fuzzy in people's minds. Excuse me, the new shelter. In July 30th, East County Observer article managing editor Jay Heater suggested that the idea of having a Manatee County Animal Services Shelter in East County is moot, because nonprofits already exist in East County, referring to Humane Society of Lakewood Ranch and Nate's Honor Rescue. In case you didn't get a chance to read the letter emailed to the B O C C from the Humane Society of Lakewood Ranch on August 25, I have provided you with a copy of it, and I have highlighted the following excerpts. Quote, "The Humane Society at Lakewood Ranch unequivocally supports a new Manatee County Animal Services adoption facility in the fast-growing East County. The assumption, the assumption that our shelter, an existing shelter in the East County, will absorb the overpopulation of MCAS adoption pets is in error. Expanding county services into the East County is critical to meet the growing, excuse me, needs of our community and the animals within it. We hope Manatee County funds this needed expansion." That's from Susan Giroux, the Vice President, and Deanna Merchi, the President of the Humane Society at Lakewood Ranch. Secondly, Nate's Honor Rescue is in the middle of a capital campaign that is at least a year away from completion. And I learned in a recent meeting of shelter directors that they will not be able to absorb the overpopulation of MCAS adoption pets either. So that's very specifically saying that if anybody is relying on these shelters out there to absorb some of the pets, they aren't going to be able to. I believe it's appropriate for the B O C C to allow the shelter funding to remain in the budget for a new county shelter, the location and design to be determined, determined after the donation of the bishop animal shelter is finalized and future needs are assessed. This is part of where my history comes in, because a lot of you are not aware that based on history, just in case the donation of the bishop animal shelter cannot be agreed upon by the two parties and does not happen, the funding will still be in the budget to proceed with a desperately needed new county shelter. Thank you.
All right, next is Lori Gurley.
Can you hear me?
There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Okay, so I am here to talk about the animal shelter. And I talked to you earlier today.
Name please for the record.
Lori Gurley.
Thank you.
Manatee County resident.
Thank you.
I talked to you earlier today and gave you some facts. Do you remember? 311 animals between MCAS and bishop today? So now I'm going to give you another little fact. So between 6/14, June 14, and 9/14, September 14, 40 rescues accepted animals from our shelter. So we transferred out animals to 40 different rescues during that three-month time period. Six of them were in Manatee County. 34 of them went out of county or out of state. So to follow up on Sue Colsey's statement, if you think that the East County rescues, not shelters, because they're not open-admission shelters, are going to absorb all of our animals, I don't think that's going to happen. But I could be wrong. I've been wrong before. So just in closing, we are grateful for every single animal that is pulled out of our shelter and, and taken into rescues. I mean, that and adoptions is, is all we got, you know? I will say, I may have said it before in another conversation, I am on a nonprofit board that strictly supports Manatee County Animal Services. We transported 40 dogs out of this county and into northern states since August, or April 22, to a tune of about $10,000 that we paid the transport for. So where are we getting that money from? The animal-loving community, because they donate to us, because we are a nonprofit. So my request is that you don't touch the funds in the budget, that you leave them as they are, because again, fact, we don't have bishop today. So let's see how that plays out. Thank you.
Next is Alicia Doherty. I hope I'm saying that correctly.
Where do they go?
They go up north. They have a shortage of big dogs.
Santa Claus is up north, but where?
All the northeast. Like New England and all that. Yeah, yeah.
Did you say Santa Claus?
They pay 250 a dog.
Yes, ma'am. Please state your name, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Alicia Doherty. I'm a Manatee County resident. I live on Terracee Island. I am also part of Manatee County Animals Advisory Board, and I've also volunteered at Manatee County Animal Shelter for over nine years. So I've seen the shelter. I've been there, I work there, I help out as much as I can. We have a lot of volunteers, and I can tell you about Lori Gurley with FOMOSS. She didn't mention that those dogs go all the way to Maine, Iowa. We literally have people that are begging other rescues, other places, other humane societies, to go to the northeast, whatever, take any of our dogs we can. And people are giving $250 per dog to get them out of Manatee County Animal Shelter. It is not like Honor Rescue. It is not like the Humane Society. It's, they, they have their own dogs. They have their own surrenders. We have so many dogs that need homes, and you're bringing in so many people to Manatee County that if you just figure out of 10 families that they bring in one dog, we can't handle all those surrenders. We just can't do it. So you're asking for us as citizens to step up and pay for these dogs and get them homes. And it shouldn't be all on the citizens. That's what we pay taxes for. And if I remember right, four years ago, you all realized that we needed a new shelter. Granted, bishop is a great gift, if we get it, but we're not even assured that we're going to get it. And if you've really gone through that building, you'll realize with impound and the extended amount of dogs that we have, it is just not going to be enough. So it'd be great to think that these commissioners of you all can be proactive and put a footprint on the east side of the county to handle what we know is coming down the pike. Let's not like be defensive on it, let's be offensive. We need it. I don't know how many people have to get up here to say it, but we really need it. And I know it's not $18,000 for a library, but it is just as important for our county to have these shelters in place. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come forward and speak? Yes, ma'am, come on down, state your name, you'll have three minutes.
I apologize for being late. I had board meeting the pen late.
I'm Dr. Sue Ann Miller, president of the Friends of the East Manatee Library at Lakewood Ranch. The document coming to you has two charts. The first is a comparison of Manatee County Library Services to our neighboring counties, and we don't compare well. As you can see in the yellow highlighted rows, population served per building in Manatee is over 64,000. Neighboring counties are in the 40,000s. Full-time staff numbers are miserable, which limits the number of hours the libraries are open and the services librarians can provide. This needs to improve, and the seventh library will help. The second chart, I'll discuss shortly. I want to be sure that public listening understands the cost of the library is 14.9 million, as indicated on the capital improvement plan, not 20. And most importantly, the funding is accounted for. The money is there. Part of the funding comes from the sales tax increase voters approved in 2016. The additional 5 million is needed improvements to the campus upon which the library is only one building. Thank you, Dr. Hope's and his team, for that insight and planning. For those who don't know, the campus includes an aquatic center, ball fields, racket courts, a gymnasium, EMS station, government buildings, and more. You need to plan the infrastructure to accommodate the total plan. We find the term Taj Mahal to be offensive. It is a library, a community center. Size, and therefore the cost, is partly determined by population. As you can see in the chart provided, central library, our largest, is 57,000 square feet, serving Bradenton's population of a bit over 56,000. It is also the central processing center for the materials for all the libraries. The East County Library with the second-floor shell totals 50,000 square feet, serving a projected population of 2030, in 2030, of 64,000 plus. And 2030 is not the final build-out for the East County. That's another 20 to 30 years in the future. The library needs to be built on projected population, or it will be obsolete when it opens. And you know that, it's common sense. Commissioner Ball is our district five leader. We need you to support the CIP at 14.9. You need to represent us, and you know what the needs are. At the town hall meeting you held on March 6, 2019, which was standing room only, you asked each attendee what they saw as needed in the library, along with the survey conducted by Library Services. The architect has designed a facility. Not all of our requests were met, but the most needed. We don't understand why the 7 million issue continues. You discussed this at your, your June 16 work session two months ago. It's time to end the discussion and the excuses. Library Services and the administration have completed all the correct steps to get this library built, involving the public, bidding the contracts, preparing the budget with the costs accounted for. It's time to fund it.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public want to come forward? Any phone calls?
Yes, Madam Chair. Caller 419, 419, press star six, and please state your name for the record.
I'm Terry Bridge. I ask that your budget vote tonight be pure in heart regarding the new animal shelter. You do have the option of passing the line item as is, and then in a month or two, deleting it. But that would be misleading concerns of residents like my. it, but that would be misleading concerns to residents like myself. It also would be turning a blind eye to the overcrowding of animals in county-run facilities. Despite this addition, the overcrowding of animals in county-run animal shelters will continue. The data I have provided you over the months support this. The 124 kennels planned for Bishop fall significantly short of the number of dogs taken in monthly by the Palmetto Shelter alone, especially when length of stay data and the shelter's possible demolition are considered. There are nationally-recognized standards of care that animal shelters should be providing, and I believe this should be especially true in government-run shelters. Remains of the problem of overcrowding is the national standard of care for an animal's primary enclosure. I quote the standard, quote, "Separation between food, urination, and defecation and resting areas should be maintained. A primary enclosure must allow animals to sit, sleep, and eat away from areas in their enclosures where they defecate and urinate," end quote. Stubbing up of dogs and kennels due to overcrowding, as has occurred at Palmetto, egregiously misses the standard of care. I see a two-track solution to the county-run animal shelter overcrowding problem, a solution for which the county has the money and the professional expertise to accomplish. Track one, keep the money budgeted for the new animal shelter so that when track two is completed, action can be taken immediately. Track two, have Animal Services present to the board a strategic and data-driven assessment of, one, the impact of Bishop's assimilation into county animal services, two, the remaining unfacilled shelter needs, and three, the options and associated costs for addressing those remaining needs. This two-track approach has urgency. Each year the county allows overcrowding at its animal shelter, the physical, mental, and behavioral health of thousands of animals are infected. This urgency is underscored by the county's growth, potential impacts of climate change, the projected increase in COVID-related relinquishments, increased building costs, and increased community expectations as to the quality of animal care their tax dollars are paying for. Thank you.
Caller 445, 445, star six. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Glenn, if you'll be in for the record. Long day. Anyway, I guess a couple of my questions are.
Can you speak up? We're having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, on page 31 of the report, I'm going by the line items here. I see $7,396,068 for affordable housing, T B B G home grant, and projects. I'm on the webpage. I can't find where any of that information is. In fact, when you go to the R E O reports, your latest report is 2018 that reflects the 2018 done by Terrence Stewart. So where have we been for four years, three years? No other reports are on this webpage. It goes back to 16, but the latest one is 2018. I don't get it. So we would need to get that updated, and I've done a records request on where the money goes, what account that's in, and I'd like some clarity on that as well, because there's transparency and accountability. I see none of that. My second issue, again, we go back to the animal shelter, about monies and this and that. I don't see any in any of this report, the $15 million for the homeless vets for the jail. Where would I find that? And how come we're not discussing it?
Glenn, did you miss our meeting today?
Yeah, he did.
He must have.
Coming from A R P funds.
We got money, Glenn.
It's not the C I P.
Oh, where was I?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Be happy.
Must have been in your firm.
I fell asleep doing your two-hour lunch. That's okay. I'm glad we got some money. Okay? But the affordable housing and home grant money, I need a, we need a complete audit of that, checking accounts, money in, money out. I'm not going to let this go. Regardless that Misty thinks all that money's been paid back, I don't believe that for one second. So we're not going to let up on that. We need accountability. Glad we're moving forward with the jail, and that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, we have no more calls.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and close public comment. I have some commissioners on the board. Commissioner Whitmore.
Real quick, I just want to thank everybody that came today. I know this, you'd rather be doing stuff. I want to thank Sue for all her hard work. These women are, if you can't tell, are very assertive, and they've had my rear end for years pushing this, so I appreciate all the hard work. Alicia brings her 90-something-year-old dad every week while she's walking dogs on weekends, and he does the laundry. I think I've shown you, the laundry's up to the ceilings, and her 90-something-year-old dad comes there and does the laundry or washes the dog bowls, because you know, somebody's got to do that. So I want to thank you and thank your dad. He's moved down, so I don't know if that's good or bad, because he'll be here more. But I want to thank her. She walks, she's a surgical practice administrator, helps her doctor in surgery, and then she goes and walks dogs. So I want to thank you. Friends of Manatee, what they're talking about, they pay, we don't keep dogs that have heartworms and all that stuff. These people pay for all that. If a dog comes in, gets hit on the road, if our doctor can't do it locally, they pay for it to go to the emergency room. A few years ago, they paid $70,000, I think, for the turf for the dogs. We don't have that kind of money. This came from public-private partnerships, or public-public nonprofit-private partnerships. So I want to thank everybody. That's all I'll say about it, but you know, everybody says, put your money where your mouth is. This is one organization that went on on their own from all the other rescues and said, we're going to just help Animal Services, Manatee, and they put hundreds of thousands of dollars in the last few years towards it. Everywhere you go, there's a donation thing, and it's always full. So I want to thank you publicly, no matter what happens. I want to thank you guys for your hard work. Thank you. And thank, well, later.
Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I'm just going to respond real quick, just to give some general idea. I know we're going to have a bigger talk on it, but you know, I have every single person who came up here and spoke from the animal shelter. I've spoken to Alicia on the phone. I've had a couple of Zoom calls with Lori, and I had lunch with Sue. So you know, I talk to people about this, and I think I've expressed myself, and what Sue said is exactly what I've proposed. I've never said, take it out and go find something else to do with it. I said, push it out to 2000, you know, fiscal year '24, '25, time to take Bishop and do it. It doesn't remove the money. We could always move it forward if something happens with Bishop. I never proposed taking it out of the C I P. I said defer it, so we didn't spend money until we knew exactly what we needed. So I still stand by that. As for the library, there's, I've also made it very clear on that, it just needs to be built the way it's designed. People talk about it inflating in price. Well, things do inflate in price. Look to the previous years of this board that were hesitant to bond or use funds and wanted to hold cash. I looked up the last couple of years of the C I P. This library was $10 million two years ago, and no one said anything. Even just 10% inflationary increases, and I'd argue, especially in the past 12 months, it's closer to probably like 15% to 20% in materials and labor increases. Even 10% increases with no change in the library at all would be $12.1 million right now. And considering we look forward out over two years and factor in future inflation, this isn't even implying some quote-unquote, to your point, Taj Mahal library. It's the same library we've been discussing for years. It's just costs have gone up. It's not fair to the people of East County. I know there's been some changes. They added some stuff on the second floor with deck and some chiller, but it's always cheaper to build it right the first time. And honestly, we want to talk about, you know, inflation and costs. I mean, the current cost of the library is almost the same as the current C I P budget for a pool. Not to say the pool isn't equally important, but one's a pool, one's a library. I would argue more people are going to use a library. Kingfish last year, and I would fully support our boat rims, last year's C I P had the renovation of Kingfish at 450 grand. This year it's 5 million. So we could talk about inflationary cost, and if you really want to look at what we do with our citizens from a, if you look at this year's C I P, there's $27.5 million to build our own administration building for staff, plus $4.5 million to build a road to get there. That's 32 million bucks. That's more than double the cost of a library for citizens. So I mean, I'd like to think we can at least spend half the cost that we spend on ourselves on the citizens paying for it. So you know, I fully support this library, and I will continue to fully support it regardless of any briefing you have with me.
All right, well, I'm next on the board. And Commissioner Cruz, you're not exactly accurate, but you were close. And the reason you weren't exactly accurate is because I can tell you that it wasn't just because of cost increase. It was because of changes that kept taking place and not by the citizens, but by staff. And I know this because the company that's going to build it was calling me and getting frustrated because they were trying to get it done and trying to move forward because they had a date in order to break ground, and it kept getting changed, and then they wouldn't hear anything for a few months, and this went on and on. Yes, construction costs have gone up, but that wasn't the main reason for it. The other thing is that the 19 million that we saw last week, a little over 19 million, was because of other things that were added to the cost that had nothing to do really with the library itself. It is important for me, after watching this, the cost on this go up so much so quickly that I didn't want the library paying for things that it had nothing to do with. And that's why I fought it and said, no, we need to figure out. And I had been trying to find out why it was that all of a sudden the cost had gone up dramatically. And nothing against the county administrator. I mean, it was a crazy time, had a lot going on in the county, and I understand all that. But it hasn't been that simple. Dr. Miller, I appreciate you being here, and I know you know that last week it was a little over 19 million. This week you see where it's gone down, and that's because the costs have been taken out, as I stated, and now you're seeing the actual cost of the library. That being said, I mean, there are things, it's totally designed, but you know, is that the way that this board will leave it exactly? I can't say. But the library, I always told you, it was moving forward. It was never not going to be built. So you know, we need to understand that and appreciate the fact that it is moving forward, and that is why. But you know, it is something where we have to watch the cost, because we don't, you know, we're not just made of money here. I mean, we have a lot of things that we need to do, and so to put over 5 million, almost 6 million, back on it and not know why was, to me, disturbing. And I don't even like it being as high as it is, but I understand how it happened. I don't like the reason it happened, but it wasn't because of the Friends of the Library. So we have ourselves there for that. But at any rate, it is moving forward. So that's all I'll say on that. Is there any other comments, commissioners? Not seeing any more. We have three motions, it's my understanding, that we need to make. Would someone like to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Chairman. I move to adopt Resolution B-22-004, setting final millage rates for fiscal year 2021 and 2022.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Servia, second by Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I just saw you. What did you do?
No, ma'am. It is very structured with the tram process, and although I read this before, I greatly would like to read it again, just to make sure we hit everything at the points we're supposed to hit it.
Okay.
The aggregate millage rate for the FY year 2122 is 6.8322 mils, and the change from the rollback aggregate millage rate of 6.6288 mils for the operating millage is hereby determined to be an increase of 3.07%. That's all I have to read.
So is this the motion that we just voted for, for the adoption of Resolution B-22?
It has to be read.
But you have to read that statement?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote again. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? It is approved unanimously. You're welcome.
Madam Chairman, I move to adopt Resolution B-22-005, which adopts the budget for fiscal year '21 and '22, which also includes the unincorporated Municipal Services Taxing Unit and the Palmeira Municipal Services Tax Unit.
Second.
Is there anything that you'd like added?
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Madam Clerk, it's approved unanimously. Last but not least.
Motion to adopt Resolution B-22-006, which adopts the budget for fiscal year '21 and '22 for all identified Manatee County dependent special districts.
Second.
We have a motion again by Commissioner Servia, second by Commissioner Van Austin-Bridge. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It is approved unanimously, Madam Clerk. All right.
Okay, and finally, adoption of Resolution R-21-154, to adopt a five-year capital improvement planned and capital improvement planned and policy regarding the administration of the five-year capital improvement plan for the fiscal years 2022 through 2026.
Second.
Ooh, you got in there. Ooh. Whoa.
Quick on the trigger over there.
We have a motion by Commissioner Servia, second by Commissioner Satcher. He was fast. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? It's approved unanimously. Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing. Is there anything else that any commissioners would like to add?
Thank you.
No. Jan Brewer.
I would just like to say thank you to all of you.
No, thank you.
Thank you to staff.
Thank you. And my team out there, we greatly appreciate you. Thank you very much.
Jan's going to take you all out to dinner tonight.
We appreciate, we appreciate y'all more than you know.
Look at their mouths are all.
Excellent job.
I made him eat pizza.
Oh.
You're the CFO. We would expect that it would be something on the cheap side, you know?
All right, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.